We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I apologize for the delay. The time is ten oh six, and this is the regular meeting of the Clasico County Planning Commission on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty four. If we could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right. Rebecca, if you'd go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Magyar.
Here.
Commissioner Sitonovich.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Winder.
Present.
Commissioner Adika. And Commissioner Crushour is absent.
Okay. So the next order of business is to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any changes or would someone make a motion to adopt?
Remove we adopt the agenda. Present.
Marty, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We will pause for just a moment while IT does their magic. Okay, all right. So while they're working on that, this is the item on the agenda where we accept business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda. Rebecca, has anyone signed up to offer testimony? No? Okay, we have nobody in the audience, so we will move to the next item, which is discussion and work session. And Rebecca, can you bring up the PowerPoint, please? Okay, so some of you have seen this presentation. Earlier this year, we had Meg Reed from Department of Land Conservation and Development come speak with the Planning Commission in July to talk about the goal exception process and about Goals sixteen, seventeen. And that was, at that time, in anticipation of an application for a goal exception that we were waiting for the Army Corps to submit. And so we have received that, but as we have two new members on our Planning Commission that weren't here in July to receive the presentation, I just wanted to go back over it again. We're not really going to talk about the specifics of the Army Corps application itself. You'll hear that at a public hearing next month. But just to kind of remind you what the goal exception is, how it works, criteria that you'll be looking at next month as you're making a recommendation to the board. So if you can scroll down, please. Rebecca, thank you. Okay, so the statewide planning system is made up of nineteen different goals. It covers a variety of resources, ranging from public involvement to transportation planning, recreation, special resources, historic sites. And then we have last four goals, Goal sixteen, which are estuarine resources, Goal seventeen, which are the coastal shorelands, eighteen are beaches and dunes. And then Goal nineteen deals with ocean resources, which is the territorial waters off the state. And so those goals are referred to as coastal goals. And you'll see how they will play in as we are looking at the goal exception, but also how this process works. Um, next slide, please, Rebecca. So the Coastal Management Program, which began in nineteen seventy-two, you can see on the map on the right, the areas it applies to in the state of Oregon. And it covers quite a bit of territory in Clasico County, almost the entire county. And layers of different plans and partnerships and requirements that all come together in this Coastal Zone Management Act or the program. And they interact with each other. So when we're talking about policies and plans, you have estuary plans drafted in the late seventies. We have three estuaries in Clasico County, the Columbia River, Canacum River, and then Ecola Creek. So the amendment that you'll be looking at next month is related to Columbia River estuaries. So there are also higher level documents at the state level, the Territorial Sea Plan, obvious sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And then also hazard planning, because those coastal areas are typically where you will have flood zones, you'll have wave action, you may have coastal erosion. So we also have to consider hazard planning, as it says. So when an application comes in or somebody proposes to do work in the estuary, for example, or in an area that's in the coastal management zone, even if it's a federal agency, it's still required to be consistent to the maximum extent practicable with local rules and states. And so that's why Clasico County is looking at projects that the Army Corps does. Because we have in our plan, as we'll talk about in a minute, specific standards that are called enforceable policies. And an enforceable policy is approved by NOAA. It goes on the book, and then the federal government is required to be consistent with that enforceable policy to the maximum extent. And so this is really a program, the Coastal Management Zone program, that incorporates all the local government, state government, and the federal government in an attempt to coordinate the actions and be good local partners as projects get completed. Next slide, please. Okay, so Goal sixteen covers estuarine resources. And again, we have three of those areas in Clasico County. And when a management plan is prepared for an estuary, there are three types of designations, portions of the estuary received. They're either classified as natural, which is where the most pristine or most environmentally sensitive locations and flora and fauna are located. You have conservation areas where they're not quite as environmentally sensitive, and there may be some opportunity for different types of projects or levels of development. And then you have the development level, which is really where the most intense development would occur. In the Columbia River, it's the navigation channel and six hundred feet on either side of the navigation channel. And then you may have water-dependent areas, for example, like Juana Mills water dependence, so they are classified in the development category. And so the management plan will lay out all those three areas and then talk about what kind of activities would be allowed in each of those different designations. So I'll pause briefly. Does anybody have any questions right at this point? Next slide, please. All right, so the Columbia River is classified as a deep draft development estuary. You can see on the slide the pink line that's through the river, that is the navigation channel and roughly six hundred feet on either side of the navigation channel. And all of that is in the coastal zone management. So the Army Corps, as they do their dredging and dredge disposal, needs to be consistent with the plan. All right, next slide, please, Rebecca. I'm going to touch briefly on coastal shorelands, but it's not going to be really part of what you're looking at next month. But the coastal shorelands that are identified in Goal seventeen are those areas that are along the estuaries, contiguous with the estuaries. It also covers coastal lakes, like Sunset Lake and Smith Lake. I think it's the Clasico Plains area. And then, of course, it covers the... Wow. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. So since we will specifically be talking about the Columbia River Estuary Management Plan and compliance with the requirements, I just want to point out a couple of things. So the estuary management plan, as I said, was drafted in the late nineteen seventies, and it's never really been fully updated since then. So we are working again with information that's over forty years old. Likely there have been changes in the estuary since that time. But the plan itself consists of policies that cover not only the entire region, but also there are twenty-two subareas. So Baker Bay has its own policies. Youngs Bay has its own policies. The John Day River area has its own. Miller Sands has its own set of policies. And so as you come in from the mouth of the river, all the way upstream, River Mile Forty Four, there are different areas that each have their unique set of policies and their designation. There's also a component that deals with dredge material. So we are required to make sure that we have, I'll say zone for lack of a better term, but identified dredgertorial disposal sites that have at least five-year capacity to place dredgerturials. Our plan was last updated in two thousand and five. Actually, the plan was updated in two thousand and two. We adopted it in two thousand and five. So again, that plan is also very old, and I'm sure that there are changes that have occurred in the river at that time, since that time. So again, just dealing with older information. There's requirements that we identify navigation sites. And also, if there's restoration activities, there are policies that govern that. And then there's a whole series of appendices that contain some practical information. The Columbia River doesn't just fall under the jurisdiction of Clasico County. It's also under the jurisdiction of Warrenton and Astoria. And so when we, as the county, make changes to Goal sixteen, we need to coordinate that with Warrenton and Astoria. And so we, as the county, are the keepers of the estuary management. When we change it, the other jurisdictions need appropriate changes. So we will be leading this process, but you'll see this similar process going on in Warrenton and Astoria over the... You go to the next slide, please. Okay, so I'm not going to talk too much about this, because this kind of gets into the technicality of the application. But in general, what we'll be talking about next month at your public hearing is in-water disposal of dredged material. So this is different than beach nourishment, where the material is dredged up and piped into a beach area or into a completely upland area. So this is dredge that will actually be going into the water, and the currents will move the dredged material. Next slide, please. We're going to skip that one. And that one. And that one. Okay, stop. Go back, sorry. So what will be asked at the... Or what will be considered on October eighth at your next meeting is a goal exception. And a goal exception is really similar to a variance. It's where you are asking to do something that is not allowed by the applicable statewide planning goal. In this particular case, it will relate to the placement of dredge material in water in areas where that activity is currently not allowed. So the state... Next slide, please. When they set up the nineteen planning goals, created a process to deal with this exact situation. And so with the goal exception, as I said, you're really looking to exclude certain areas from the requirements of the goal. It's really there to provide flexibility. It's a very high bar that has to be demonstrated, can be met. And it's not something that we deal with on a regular basis. I wanted to go over this. And, uh, next slide, please. So the state has three types of goal exceptions. One is if a property is physically developed and can't be changed to comply with the applicable statewide planning goal. One is if it's irrevocably committed. So perhaps you've got a vacant property that's a zone for a resource of some sort, but it's completely surrounded by development that is not consistent with that resource zone. And then the third type of exception is called a reasons exception. And the reason is called a reasons exception is because you have to show the reasons why your project can't comply with the particular goal that you're seeking an exception for. So in this particular instance, what you'll be reviewing on October eighth is that the applicant will be trying to demonstrate that the reason they cannot comply with Goal sixteen and stay within the development area for their dredge material disposal, they're going to be showing you the reasons why that can't occur. And so you have your reasons why you can't meet the goal. You have to show that there's not another area that wouldn't need a goal exception that could be used for the same project. So that's the second type of reason you have to prove. You have to show, number three, that there are not any long-term environmental, economic, social, or energy consequences that would be more impactful to the land that you're looking to use than if you went somewhere else that also required a goal exception. So, you know, for example, in the Columbia River, you would have to show that maybe there was another place in the Columbia River that still might need a goal exception, but might have less impact than where you want to put your project. If that makes sense? And then the fourth reason that you'll need to consider is whether or not it's going to be compatible with adjacent uses around it or if there are conditions or measures that the applicant can take that have any adverse impacts. So that's really going to be the main area that you're going to focus on. You're going to look at what the applicant is proposing, and you're going to compare that to these four reasons and see, make a recommendation on whether or not a goal exception should be approved. Next slide, please. All right, so I think we've covered that one. Next one, please. And that's questions and discussions. So what will happen is October eighth, you will have your formal public hearings. Then we... You will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and they will have two public hearings on the ordinance. And we expect that to occur October twenty-third and November thirteenth. And then you will see Warrenton and Astoria, based on our decision, move forward with their comprehensive plan amendments as well. So it's... I know that was a lot of information, but I just wanted to really stress the point that the area you're focused on are those four reasons when you look for the goal exception. And then there will be two related cases to that, dealing with changes to the text of the plan and our code and map changes. But those will come after the goal exception. Yes?
Since the Army Corps of Engineers has been dredging Columbia for many, many years, what's driving this now needed goal exceptions? Because it's been on the books since the seventies. So why now?
So I don't want to go too much into the Army Corps' case, but generally speaking, they... Where the dredge material has been placed in the past was consistent with the county's code. And then around 2010, there were changes made in the practices that the Corps was using. And those practices, which neither Clasico County nor the state were aware of until about last year, those changes were not consistent with our code. And so when the Army Corps came in for a Clean Water Act certification last year for their ten-year operation and maintenance plan, it could not be issued because they were not consistent, maximum and practicable with county codes and statewide planning goals. And so that triggered a series of almost weekly meetings between state staff, county staff, and Army Corps staff to work through this process. And since the state couldn't sign off on it, there had to be something that happened. And so what we came to was a goal exception. And since Army Corps does not apply for permits, Department of State lands will be the applicant, since they own the bottom of the river.
So at some point, they changed their practice, which is no longer in compliance with our goals.
Yeah.
Therefore, they need a goal exception.
Yeah. And so we will go through this round of amendments and goal exceptions. And I expect that in early spring, we will probably have another round, because they are also updating their twenty-year dredge material disposal plan. And I think as part of that, there will have to be other goal exceptions that will need to be approved. Are there any other questions about the goal exception process or the schedule or anything about Goals sixteen, seventeen? Okay, so seeing none, we will move on then to the next item, which is the update of certain objective standards or CAOS projects. And this month, there really isn't much to report. So today, we have gone through Articles one through four of the law doc. And we're looking today at Articles five and six. There's really not much in five and six that deal specifically with housing. So not very many revisions are proposed. A couple of items to note. In Article five, we have, which covers special districts, we did not address the flood hazard overlay, because we know that there are going to be changes that will need to be made as part of the FEMA biop implementation. So it didn't seem to make sense to make changes twice. So we're leaving that one. The geologic hazards overlay district, we've recently done a series of revisions to add exemptions, expand the list of qualified professionals. And until different maps are produced, there's not much more that we can do in that section of code either. So we did not touch those, which meant there really wasn't a lot in Article five to look at. Article six, which you will actually hear a lot about at your next meeting in conjunction with deals with environmental and... And again, not very much in there that deals specifically with housing. So again, we made just a few changes to try and, you know, eliminate words significantly or maximum extent feasible or unreasonably. We did some basic grammatical and punctuational cleanups. And that was really about it. I don't know if you have questions about any of those changes? Okay, so what will happen next is, obviously, next month, you are going to have a very busy agenda. In addition to the Army Corps stuff, you're going to have Silicebin and the Law Doc Housing Amendments. And I would expect that there will probably be speakers for the housing amendments. So it is going to be a very long meeting to warn you all. But we're not going to bring chaos back to you until November... December, I think. We're going to take some time. We're going to go back through all the revisions, clean them up, make sure they're organized and clear, and bring them back for a second draft in December. And then we'll probably do a third draft in January, just to make sure that we've touched on everything. And then we will do the adoption hearing for that, I believe, in February. So that will be moving forward. Any other questions about CAOS? The timing on that one? All right, so our next item of business is the project status report. And you can see we've put in all the projects that are upcoming. Again, at your October meeting, you're going to have five public hearings. And some pretty big items. Again, I hope that we can have a quorum. We are also moving forward with short-term rentals. There's another work session on September twenty-fifth to talk about those. But those are really right now the projects that we have. Any questions about the projects or scheduling? All right. So then we will move on to the director's reports. We've talked about the housing amendments. The second draft has been posted, and we are expecting to have hearings with the Planning Commission on October eighth. Two readings with the Board October third and November. And if those are approved and if they are not appealed, they would go into effect in the middle of December. We're continuing to work with the Childcare Barriers Work Group. They have created preliminary recommendations related to both regulatory side in terms of zoning and in terms of Department of Early Learning and building codes. And then we're just having further discussion on that. Their next meeting will be next Friday, and there is a link to that meeting there in the agenda. A comprehensive update. We have the fifth meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee for the Economic Opportunities Analysis coming up on September nineteenth. There's a link for the meeting there. And then Saturday, the fourteenth, for Goals sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, there's going to be an in-person meeting that will be held at the Napa School in their new middle school library. So the public's invited to attend that. It's from ten a.m. to noon. And we did do a virtual meeting on August twenty-seventh. So we're not a lot of participants. That's a little bit disappointing. But we continue to move on with that. The Housing Task Force, which is working on a grant project, continues to meet as well. There's going to be a discussion on September fifth, where I'll be talking about the FEMA biop and impacts from that and on housing. The virtual meeting will be down at the Bob Chisholm's. We talked about short-term rental camps. Uh, FEMA biop, yeah, there's a load of information there. I'm happy to talk about FEMA biop all day, every day, because it's absolutely astounding. I don't know if you have any questions about this. We are most likely going to be proceeding with a temporary moratorium at this point that would go to the Board on November thirteenth. And then would go into effect immediately and run through February twenty-eighth. And the reason that we're looking at a moratorium is because by December first, we have to pick one of these pickums. And we... If we don't, we default to the permit-by-permit Habitat Assessment. The problem is, staff cannot enforce that, because it's not in our code. Our floodplain requirements are all spelled out in the Law Doc in Article five. And so we can't, at the counter, tell someone, "You now need to do this," and it's not in the code. We can't enforce it. If we don't enforce it and we just keep permitting the way we do, we run the risk of falling out of compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, which puts homeowner insurance policies at risk and could make us ineligible for emergency disaster assistance. And until the Board chooses one of the pickums and we get the code amended to do that, it's just... The only way I can see to maintain compliance is to go with a temporary moratorium. The best part about it, if you can look at a best part or a silver lining for a moratorium, is that we're going to be entering the holiday season, the rainy season, and we're not going to be running into a lot of people with development... Looking for floodplain development permits at that point. The impact should be as minimal as we can hope to make it for that three-and-a-half-month period that the moratorium would be in effect. So...
Fine.
And it's going to... There are a few exceptions that I pulled directly out of FEMA's model ordinance for things that are exempt in the model ordinance. So basic paving, basic filling, landscaping, where you're not changing the grade of the land, above-ground utilities, a few other things would be exempt. They may still require floodplain permits, but they would be exempt from the moratorium.
What about underground utilities?
Nope. So this is one of the concerns I have with the rollout of the pickum thing, is that FEMA released two documents. They released the model ordinance and they released the Habitat Assessment Guide. So if we adopt the model ordinance, that's those are our sets of rules. The Habitat Assessment Guide is for that permit-by-permit analysis. The Habitat Assessment Guide exempts above-ground and below-ground utilities, but the model ordinance only exempts above-ground utilities. but the model ordinance only exempts above-ground utilities. It is what it is, that's the point. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that because that is going to be significant. And then, over the next few months, once the Board makes a choice, we'll be doing, either bringing a model ordinance back to you or the rules for the Habitat Assessment. When you say like a Habitat Assessment?
Yeah.
We don't know because this is a new requirement. And so it's, the Habitat Assessment Guide that you're supposed to use to put your assessment together is forty-seven pages long. And it asks a lot of questions that I would not even know how to begin to answer. You're gonna have to hire someone who deals with fish egress and floodplain hydraulics and all sorts of... It's not a simple thing. You can't check a box and say yes, no, yes, no. I mean, it's gonna require technical analysis that is beyond the capability of my staff. Not because they're ignorant, but because, I mean, it's a very specialized field. And, you know, there are only gonna be so many qualified professionals throughout the state and this covers thirty-one counties, two hundred and thirty-nine different jurisdictions. If everybody needs to have qualified professionals preparing a Habitat Assessment, where are these people gonna come from? You know, what is the wait time gonna be for having a professional come? I know how long it takes to get a contractor to my house, no offense, but, you know, it takes forever because there's a limited... It's gonna be such a mess. So, yeah, I don't know how long it will take, but it's probably a long time.
Question on draft two, available for public comment, can that be sent?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mail that out to the Planning Commission so we can start our review of that as soon as possible.
So then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is Friday, I sent this email and I was all excited because I thought, somebody has applied to repeal the two-acre minimum lot size requirement. So I'm gonna apologize upfront because I did not thoroughly read before I emailed. And so if you read this more carefully, that is not what is being requested. It's apparently a very tailored receipt, petition, that is requesting a certain provision be repealed, but then amended with some language that I think is even more unclear than what is already in the OAR. And it appears to deal, again, with just this gentleman's two specific properties. But it did raise a question that I would like to discuss with you, is that, first of all, until I received this, I did not know that there was a way to petition for repeal of a rule. I don't know if the two-acre minimum could be repealed because, as I understand it, it was the outcome of a court case many, many years ago, probably in the late nineteen nineties. But it would be something that, if there's interest in the Planning Commission, I would be happy to do some more research on to see what the possibilities are. But this particular petition, I don't think we need to take any action on. Well, that's what I'm curious about, could we, could the county do that? Or is that two acres so set in stone that you can't even use the petition method to overrule it? And I don't know the answer. So I would like to do some more digging. Again, as I understand, that two acres came out of a court case and I don't know if we can just submit a petition to reverse that. But the petition process itself, as you can tell from the materials submitted, are not necessarily a big lift. So, but let me do some more research on it and hopefully I didn't get anybody's hopes up too high. I was just reading it at the end of the year and I thought, my goodness, it was revolutionary. But it wasn't as revolutionary as I thought. Anyway, and that is everything I have. Thank you for letting me talk.
So, um, to make a suggestion, we're gonna, since we have such a busy meeting time around, probably should give, we have a chairman in here. That maybe, I need to put that on the agenda first thing in the meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Chairman's fresh hour can be...
Yeah.
Need, it's helpful to have as many people present as possible for bigger public hearing in person.
Yeah, I expect that you will have quite a contingent show up for the housing amendment. I expect that just probably takes the most amount of time. Yeah, I would, and we can, I suspect that we will run past noon, so we can bring in lunch and if you need to, we can take a break so that we, y'all can have lunch and, you know, carry on.
We've done it before where we take a lunch break.
Yeah. Yeah. And unfortunately, everything just happened at the same time. And the housing amendments, obviously, the Board and everyone would like to see done as soon as possible. The Silas Fabin needed to be done because the moratorium expires at the end of the year. And then the Army Corps submitted, so they had their due process. There wasn't much we could do in terms of timing. But we had also expected that the BiOP pickum would be on the meeting next month, so you'd take it a little bit of... Anyway, that's all I have, thank you. I guess I adjourn the meeting, or adjourn, call forty-two, thank you.